This is a meeting of the Auburn School Committee. It's August 5th, 2020. I would like to call the meeting to order. Do we have any citizens' comments? I don't see anyone. And we have no special recognitions. Is that correct, Dr. Hanfield?
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
All right. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of 7:29, 2020.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second. Roll call vote. Ms. Harrington?
Yes.
Ms. Holloway? Dr. McCrillis? Ms. Kaufman? We're voting on the minutes?
Hi.
Hi. We're voting on the minutes of the last meeting. Would you accept those?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and I will abstain. So that's four and one abstention. And now we move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Hanfield?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just real quick, I'd like to start today. I'd just like to say a big thank you to everyone involved with helping us get the high school graduation off the ground and completed. This past Friday night, we had 173 students and their families participate in graduation on Memorial Field. And it wasn't without a tremendous amount of assistance from so many different people, in particular, on the local level. I just wanted to thank Dalian Coyle at the Department of Public Health and Inspection Services, town manager Julie Jacobson. I'd also like to thank all of the public school staff that assisted with us that evening, as well as Joe Fahey and the custodians. They did a terrific job in getting the site prepared for that evening. So just wanted to publicly recognize them and say, and thank you. It was a, it was a great night and a great end for a class that has had a lot to endure through this COVID crisis. So just wanted to publicly say thank you to everyone.
Any comments?
I went. Oh, sorry. No, I went. It was very well done, and I was really impressed. And it was very safe, so. Good job, crew.
I would agree with that. It really showed how great Auburn is, and I'm really happy our students were able to attend and get a graduation. They definitely deserved it.
I would, I would echo Dr. Hanfield's sentiments, and I would just add that I'm sorry I was, I was unable to make it. However, and talking to people after and before, and seeing some of the postings on social media, the families were so happy, the kids were so happy. It was just, it was great to see. Again, as you said, they've been through enough, and we didn't know what this was going to look like. From what I understand, it turned out great, and it's just great, great to see the kids that happy heading into their freshman year of college or the world of work, whatever it is they choose. But it was nice, and the parents are very excited, as I said before. And after, I saw a lot of video and pictures of people getting ready for the graduation and, and, you know, friends safely gathering. It was just a wonderful thing. So thanks to all who pulled that off.
Okay. Yes, so as, as you're aware, I sent a letter Sunday evening to our families in town regarding our intent to reopen in September. I think you received a copy of that, but if not, there is a copy in your packet of material this week. That letter kind of leads into the new business, which is the Auburn Public Schools reopening and readiness plan. So Sunday's evening's letter really was kind of just the nuts and bolts of what the academic structure was going to be for the school year. What we're in the process of doing now is creating our total reopening program, and you have a link to that in your packets as well. That brings you live to the working document. It's required to be to DESI, at least the draft, if you will, by August 10th. We were hoping for a delay with the pushback of school to give us a little bit more time, but the commissioner, in fact, does want first drafts in on August 10th. So we will have that for them. What is before you today in that document is a draft of topics and information for the public as we understand and anticipate things right now. And of course, we're going to fine tune this, you know, over the next month, you know, moving toward, you know, our reopening of September 16th. We'll continue to review it as an administrative group with the Auburn Education Association Return to School Team and, of course, you, the school committees, we prepare for town halls with families through August 17th. Draft two, you'll see next week, and then I suspect for the 19th, we will bring you a third iteration of any changes that come forward out of town hall meetings or questions from families. And then we will refine that. The intent is to refine that as we go forward and then bring any addendums to you as necessary prior to the opening of school. It very much is, is a working document. It, it, it is designed to get us open safely, and it will continue to, like I said, evolve, you know, as the school year progresses through the fall and the winter. So if you haven't had a chance to take a look at it, the link is there. And, you know, certainly, it's a live document. As I said, the Return to School Team on Monday, who had some great input, you know, just from, from our discussion off the letter on Sunday, you know, people can go in live time and see, see us working on it. So with that, that's, that's really all I have for new business. Questions or comments or, or anything?
Any comments or questions regarding that?
Uh, Casey?
Yes.
When are the teachers going to actually report to work? Do they have a date yet?
Yes, so we, we're in the process, and our last, our last meeting with the union last week, with the 10-day start brokered between MTA and, and Commissioner O'Reilly, teachers will report to school on August 31st, and that will begin their 10 days of preparation and training prior to receiving students on the 16th. There is the September 4th closure for the Labor Day weekend, as well as the September 7th closure for the Labor Day weekend. That's historically been part of their contract. But the 10 days will, will commence on August 31st.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Um, through the chair, I guess I just had a question regarding feedback from any of the surveys that have gone out, more just about responsiveness, both from our, our staff and our families. Are we finding that we're getting a good response rate?
Um, Dr. Chamberlain?
Yeah, so I took a quick peek at those this morning. The day for return is tomorrow, actually. I believe principals are going to send the surveys out again because we don't have all respondents. But for those that have responded thus far, the rate of folks going with the hybrid learning model is between 80 and 86% of those responding, right? Again, it's not the entire school community in any of the schools, and each, each school has a separate survey. So we'll see how that goes. Mrs. Worsbicki is already using some of the transportation responses to compare those who said, no, they will not be using transportation, to those applications that we already have in place to help us to try and get a sense of, do we have applications for people who aren't going to ride the bus? And that'll help us with that piece of thing. So we are pushing on that. We're going to have some secretaries making calls to folks that we know we don't typically hear from to get their survey responses entered. So we're working on it, but it is still in process.
Okay.
And there is also a preschool survey that will go out today. I met with the preschool staff along with Mrs. Reedy to develop what we think gets students in for the most amount of face-to-face learning as we can, as recommended by DESI, while also providing them with a robust remote option as well. So that survey will go out for people's selections today, and hopefully we'll have a better sense of the number of students that will be attending there as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
And through the chair, if I may, just quick. On, on the school district website, I have posted links to surveys for, by school for families who may, may need them, so they're available there as well. And then in terms of feedback, specific feedback that I've been receiving from families, you know, they, they like, seemingly like the phased-in approach that we're taking, the cautious approach that we're taking. There are a lot of questions, of course, about the actual, you know, how the school day is going to operate, right? And so we're, we're talking internally now about how we can get some information to families in a way that's really useful to them prior to town hall meetings. We've been discussing creating a video of sorts where we, as the adults, would participate as the kids. Video, basically video ourselves in terms of what a school day looks like on the bus, once you get off the bus into your school, out of your school, to kind of give them a sense of what, like, it would look like, what, what they can envision, you know, you know, approaching school, you know, starting on the 21st, which would be the first day we would receive Cohort A. So we're talking about ways to really give as much insight into people in terms of what to expect. So we're working on that. And then other, the, the other really big question we get beyond that right now is, you know, people want to know about cohort formation, you know? We've had some, some inquiries about, you know, neighborhood clustering, you know, of cohorts, if that's possible. We talked a little bit about that at our Return to School meeting on Monday. Seemingly, families are seeking to do that as they're trying to work creatively around childcare issues and things of that nature. For us, the, the concern around that just becomes, you know, can we balance, you know, if we have a neighborhood that's heavy and we make them Cohort A or part of Cohort A, does that create kind of an equitable, you know, number situation for Cohort B? So we're looking at that. We have a, a meeting with AA Transportation to discuss our transportation situation and any kind of things that they have going on in the air ends next Wednesday. But we're already generating bus lists with our students by neighborhoods, and we're starting to, as Dr. Chamberlain said, we're starting to do some cross-referencing of people who've indicated they want bus or don't want bus, and then we're trying to get some, some numbers by neighborhoods to see, you know, if putting them in Cohort A and Cohort B would be feasible. So those are, those are kind of the, the big things, you know, not unexpected, but, you know, we'll have some answers, hopefully, you know, in the, in the coming weeks around those things.
Through the chair, do we have any idea when parents will know what cohort their child will, so that they can start planning for childcare?
So barring, barring any, any, you know, dramatic changes in cohort requests or, or hybrid versus remote requests, rather, I should say, that we will, you know, there'll be a small window after town halls for, for families to alter their selections. But we will hopefully have some sort of a preliminary idea, you know, of what, what that may look like, you know, somewhere around the week of the 17th, rather. That would then give families a month to, to kind of know which ends. We've also had families, you know, start to reach out to us and ask, in addition to the neighborhood pieces, ask about, you know, is it possible to put certain students together in certain cohorts for, you know, variety of things, like you just said, childcare, transportation, whatever the case may be. So we're going to try and do the best we can with all of that. We really are going to try and see if we can make things work to the best of our ability for our families. We just can't guarantee things like that right now because we just haven't sat down to, to just kind of see what we have for the numbers yet.
Great, thank you.
Through the chair, if I might ask, this would be more towards Cecilia. Have we had to give money back to families that aren't going to use the buses? I know we were trying to collect it all ahead of time.
Hi. No, we haven't given any money back, but we had, we have collected it, and we will be reimbursing people who decide not to come and ride the bus. So we will be reimbursing. We did, from last year, we did allow, if there was, we gave them a credit of $25 for the last part of the year. So we did give those, we gave people an option to either move that money forward for this year or to get reimbursed. So the people that asked to be reimbursed were reimbursed. The $25 was rolled over for this year. So we will reimburse people if, if, if they've paid and they decide not to use the bus.
Okay, thank you. That's fair.
And just through the chair to that, to that point, too, we've also, we've also made some provisions financially, if in fact, you know, we do see a lot of requests for refunds, and we do have some offset, some offsets available to cover that, so it doesn't leave us exposed.
Good.
So that's, that's in place as well.
Any other comments or questions?
Um, through the chair, I was just going to say, I really like the idea of having the teachers go and do a video looking like the students. I think the kids will get a kick out of it. It'll probably, I mean, it's good for parents to see, but I think that'll just be another nice touch points. You know, kids want to know what their teachers would do all summer, and it'll add a little levity to a somewhat heavy topic, so.
Through the chair, I, I agree. I have to give credit to Mr. Desto for being the one to bring that forward as, as the, the idea, but we thought it was a great one. We talked about it yesterday. And, you know, I, I think, you know, based on kind of the, the early survey results that, that we're receiving from families, that's very encouraging, you know, in terms of, of, you know, a return to school. I think when families see the town hall plans by, by school, I think they're going to feel even more encouraged that we're doing the very, very best we can to, to give them, you know, safety, a robust academic experience, and, and try to, start to, you know, bring them back into some sort of a socialization, you know, piece as well. So, yeah, so they want to come back. We want them to be able to see what it's going to look like to come back potentially. So, yeah, we haven't quite storyboarded it out yet, but we will see, we will see what that looks like. We will see.
You have to do gym class, too.
Yeah, well, that's a whole, like, that's, that's a whole nother kettle of fish.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds like we have a volunteer. Kaufman, is that correct?
Oh, no, sir, no, sir. I mean, if you need somebody, but I think the kids want to see the teachers, not some old lady.
Something tells me that Mr. Desto is really going to enjoy this.
I think he has quite ideas in his head. I, I would agree with him. So we'll, we'll see. We'll see how it goes, but we look forward to doing it for the kids and families.
That's excellent. Anything else, Dr. Hanfield?
Not at this time, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay, we now move on to teaching and learning. Dr. Chamberlain?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I did already touch on the family surveys. I did want to give you just a brief overview, but we are really pushing to make sure that we need to hear from every family to make sure that we know what their intention is. The other item I wanted to discuss is something called ZipSlip, which is a purchase that we're going to be making through some grant funding that we've received. So this came out of the, what we perceived as a need is for a form for both staff and family to complete each day that has them review any potential symptoms that may be associated with COVID to attest each day that they are coming to school or work without any of those symptoms. As you know, we are not going to be doing temp checks and all of that as, as students or staff enter the building, and that's under the best medical advice, but we feel like this is so important to keep at the forefront of everyone's mind and to not get lax with our attention to how we feel or how our child feels. And so Mr. Bouvier and I set up an appointment with ZipSlip, and they have a very intuitive form that's extremely easy for folks to complete. It's all electronic, and so each day it would be emailed out very early. It can all be scheduled, and folks would get this, this survey for themselves as a staff member or for their child. And all it says is, it, it, we can design it any way we want, but it asks, are any of these symptoms present? If you answer no, then you say, will my child attend school? You say yes or no. You enter your personal PIN number that you do need to set up, and that gets submitted so that we know, we've heard from everybody each day to say, I feel well today, I'm okay to come to school. It is, it complies with all HEPA and FERPA kind of personal, personal data kind of things. But what's even better about it is that it gives us some terrific data in a couple of ways. So for instance, when a secretary arrives in school, she can pull this up and she can say, oh, we didn't hear from these two staff members yet. And she can simply and easily email and text those folks to say, don't forget, you need to fill out this survey in order to come to work today. Likewise, we can do that with students in a very easy manner. It's going to be, you know, it's going to be a change, a change step, right, in getting ready for school. But the worry is, is that if we're not constantly asking people to reflect on how they feel, right, I think we could easily fall back into, well, I just have a little bit of a runny nose today, so, you know, I'm okay, I go to school like this all the time, or it's just a little bit of a sore throat, I'm okay. And we feel particularly at the start of the year that we need to make sure that everybody is asking themselves those questions each and every day. And this will allow it to be done in a very manageable way. And beyond that, what it also provides us with, if, for instance, let's say it seems like a number of kids are reporting in the ninth grade that they're having sore throats, for instance, or whatever the symptoms might be, we get a graph of that that can help us to kind of look ahead for any potential something brewing in a particular school or grade level, which is just another layer of protection, I think, to make sure that we are closely monitoring the health of our students and staff. Now, the, the, so that, we reached out to them for that particular purpose because a Google form is not as easily managed to make sure that we get responses from everyone, but there are a number of other things that ZipSlip can offer us, too, as we look to make more and more things electronic rather than paper-based for both families and for staff. So some of the forms that we use regularly for our staff can easily be imported into this and become an electronic reporting document that then also collects the data. So I mentioned it to the, the secretaries here in the building earlier today, and they are very excited about that for kind of eliminating some of the paper. And so I think it has a lot of potential. And another thing related to COVID, we're going to be asking each family to provide four emergency contacts to make sure that we can easily reach someone should a child get sick at school. And so I believe that that can all be done electronically through this, and it'll, you know, you can print it if, once it gets to the building, nurses want a paper copy, but it can all be held electronically and easily accessed by folks who obviously would be set up in a hierarchy of who can see that. But it has some great potential for us, and I think it's going to, this was another issue brought up by the AEA around how can we continue to push to go paperless, and I think this is going to help us in a lot of ways for both families and staff. I'd answer any questions if you have them.
I have, I have two questions. Beth, if a family has, say, three children, can they do all three children at once, or do they have to go in three different times?
You're going to have to go in three different times, particularly if they're different buildings, but if, if there are no symptoms present, it, it's, it's two questions. So it's very, very quick, and it can be done through an app or a computer. So you can set up the app right on your phone to answer those. So it can be done.
And my second question is, will there be a timeframe when a parent would have to answer?
Yeah, the teacher be? Yep, it'll be before, obviously, before they arrive at school, but we'll probably back that up a little bit. But I think, too, this is going to minimize calls around attendance to school because we can ask that question, will your child attend school today? So that's going to minimize the number of phone calls, potentially, that secretaries are getting each morning related to absence from school. And there are places people can comment, you know, it's a dentist appointment, or it's a, whatever it might be, so that we can have that data easily accessible. But it's very, very quick. The only time you get prompted to additional questions is if you say that there's a, there is a symptom present. We can put in a level, a number of levels of questions so that we can get the data that we want on students about their condition.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions for Dr. Chamberlain?
Through the chair, I like it. And I'd like to hear more about how it goes next week.
Anyone else? Is that all you had under teaching and learning, Dr. Chamberlain?
That was it for today.
That's it? Well, thank you. That sounds like it's going to work out just great. But again, as, as Dot said, looking forward to hearing about it.
Great.
Okay. And we now move on to a very short but sweet business and financial report. Ms. Worsbicki? I think you're muted.
I started talking and I forgot I was muted. I apologize. Good, good evening, everyone. Good afternoon, everyone, sorry. So I provided in your packet a year-to-date budget report dated August 4th, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any. Along with that, I just, and I'll add to it, is that I have a small list of budget transfers as I try to keep things moving along, but since we're meeting every, every week, this, it's a very short, small list. So I would be looking for your approval of that as well. But if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion to approve the transfer between the series as presented by the business manager.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, Ms. Harrington?
Yes.
Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Ms. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Holloway?
Yes.
And Mr. Scobie, yes, it is a vote.
Well, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Thanks for that wonderful report. And we now move on to policies.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through the Mass Association of School Committees, there are a couple of policies that will be coming the committee's way for review and consideration. This one that's before you today is a, it's a first read only, so I provide it to you in the, in the spirit of just information. It is a policy that essentially, basically clarifies, given the urgency of the COVID crisis, gives some, some clear language and guidance between, you know, school committee giving superintendent to do certain things related to, you know, kind of the overall operations of the school district. Again, it came to us late, and so I'm providing it to you for a first read. My recommendation at this time would be that we could take it up next week. As I look at it quickly, there, there's nothing in there that's, that's overtly concerning to me. But again, you know, the, the MASC provides these policies for, for student, for school committees, excuse me, school committees across the state, and so in, in some, you know, instances, you know, these policies may have more urgency than others. So I would just ask the committee to, to review that, and we can, we can discuss it next week. And then there'll be a second one coming forward. There's a lot of chatter. You don't have it yet. It just came in today as well, like literally this morning. A lot of chatter among school committees in states about whether or not you need to make facial coverings or masks a legitimate policy at the school committee level, or if you can insert them into student handbooks. It's always been, from a legal standpoint, whatever has been in the, the student handbook has been, and that being approved by the school committee, has been, you know, kind of the rule of law, if you will, as it relates to school operations. So again, that's another situation where we'll include it in your packet for next meeting, and it'll be for your review. We obviously are going to be including much of this information in revised student handbooks to start the school year. So again, it, it'll just be a review, and, and next week we could probably talk about both to see if, in fact, it merits school committee taking action as a policy on an interim basis or not. So that's, that's really all I have under the policies at this time.
Okay, we'll have a look at that this week.
It's a lengthy, I mean, it's four, it's four pages. It's, it's a little bit, it's, it's kind of long. So it, it, yeah, it's kind of long. But again, it just, this particular one that you have today, the supplemental policy just covers, you know, it, it just clearly kind of identifies superintendent, school committee roles, et cetera. I feel like in some parts of the state, there may be some, some, some friction between the two or some uncertainty between the two parties in some towns. I don't necessarily feel that's the case here in Auburn, but it certainly, it's up to you to, you know, to figure out if you want to do that or not. So, but we can review it next week.
It is early in the process, so who knows? We could be at odds within the next month or so. See everything rolls out.
Well, y'all outnumber me, so it doesn't really much matter, so.
Good point.
I have a question. Sorry, George, through the chair. Are we going to make it mandatory for the kids attending face-to-face to have well visits before school starts? And is that something we should create under policy?
You know, there's been a lot of discussion around that. I think from a logistical standpoint, I think, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, given the condition of doctors' offices right now and how they're seeing and how they're seeing kids and the volume of how they're seeing kids, if that would be, that would be possible. I think, you know, one of the things that we've been talking about, you know, through DESI and through other avenues is, you know, at first it was, well, every child will have a temperature check, well, how do you do that? And then guidance shifted to more of, you know, going away from temp checks for a variety of reasons. And then, you know, it kind of started talking about, well, how do we know, you know, you know, the whole idea of drug and drop concerns and those types of things, or kids who have allergies, you know, or whatever the case may be. You know, if you look at the listing of symptoms that are outlined, you know, in our return-to-school plan, I mean, there's about twenty symptoms where, you know, it's recommended that if you have one or more of those, that you stay home. That may not be practical, and, you know, because like I said, any of us, myself included, wake up with three or four of those every day. But it doesn't mean I'm COVID. And so even if we were to, even if we had the ability, and I'm not sure we do, to mandate wellness checks, you know, for all students, I'm not sure a doctor's office could handle that capacity. And I'm also not sure that they walk in and they walk out, it's not going to prevent, you know, them from coming down with one of the twenty symptoms that's listed in our plan. So, I mean, unless there was some state guidance or something else to the contrary that would make us really think hard and long about that, at this time, I don't think that's something we would pursue.
So are we going to budge on our requirements for vaccinations, too?
No, I wouldn't think so. I mean, I think in terms of vaccinations, I mean, you know, those are, those are things that are put forward as state law. You have to have certain vaccinations to enter the schoolhouse. So obviously, those still apply. But in a case like this where we don't have anything that's a legal, you know, legal statement around mandating wellness checks before they enter school, you know, I don't know that that's something that we could pursue.
Okay.
Oh, and through the chair, correct me if I'm wrong though, I believe you, parents can get a waiver in extenuating circumstances to not have a vaccine in time for the first day of school. Isn't, I believe there are that somewhere, is that correct?
Through the chair, there's two, there's religious reasons and medical reasons that you don't get vaccinations. But like, the flu shot is not on that list in Massachusetts. So we probably won't be able to do much with that.
Okay, well, then, thank you, Mike. So then I guess it might be worth raising if they're backlog. I'm more thinking like if doctor's offices are backlog, and a lot of our families just can't get in in time, I don't, it might be worth looking into if we need to add something like that into, or, I don't know.
Dr. Chamberlain?
Yeah, so there is a heavy push to make sure that everyone has the vaccinations that are required to enter school, irregardless of that. So I think we will stick with that policy. But there has been some discussion, we just don't have guidance on it yet, about requiring everyone to get a flu shot. So that is not included in the current guidance, but that is being discussed. So I suspect we'll hear more about that, which I would be, you know, I think would be a great step forward because there's a lot of concern about that season, about that issue come the season for the flu. So, but that is being looked at, so hopefully we might get relief from that and have to have everyone get flu shots.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Well, just through the chair real quick, too. I also know that our nurses, you know, they go through all our kids' medical records, you know, on an annual basis. And so any students that are out of compliance with immunizations or anything else that, you know, needs attention, those get rectified immediately. The building principals are in touch with the families to let them know that they're out of compliance as it relates to mass vaccination law. And to Dr. McCrillis's point, unless there is a religious or medical reason as to why they cannot receive those vaccinations, we then are required to exclude students from the building until they are vaccinated. So, so that does happen.
Right. Anything else? Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second. I have a second, any further discussion?
One question, are we meeting every Wednesday for the month of August? Is that the schedule?
Through the chair, that was, yes, well, we're on, we have standing meetings Wednesdays at one. Back, I heard in July when we were talking about establishing a summer schedule, I felt it was important, knowing that the number of issues that were going to crop up as it related to coming back to school in September, I had requested that we just put Wednesday at one on as a standing meeting time. Once we get into the fall, that may change. We haven't gotten to a week yet where I've decided, where we've felt collectively that we don't need a meeting. And I don't necessarily think that that's going to happen anytime soon. But, but you never know. But in terms of, you know, just the weekly meeting pieces, Wednesday one, I think is what we have through August. And then we could reconsider the day and meeting time, you know, at the conclusion of that. Or whenever, I mean, it's truly up to you.
Okay, thank you. And just as long as they're not too early in the morning or too late at night. One AM was a little late for me.
Oh, you caught that. I thought I got, I thought that I got that off the calendar, I'm sorry. I caught it at the last minute, I was like, ooh. And so I erased it, and no one said anything, so I thought nobody saw it. You did.
I did.
All right.
I got my red pen out and I marked it wrong.
Thank you for your diligence.
Well, at least you didn't take a nap like I did, Gail, and stay up for it. Okay, I don't think there's anything else, is there? Roll call vote for the adjournment, Ms. Harrington?
Yes.
Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Ms. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Holloway?
Yes.
And Ms. Scobie, yes, it is a vote. Good afternoon, everyone, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.